It is helpful for town meeting members to come to acceptance of something like this.
So if you just do numbers.
You're off by 1 percent.
If you add, well, if you add an affordable in the rectory, that would raise the total unit count to 37.
Yeah, so your denominator's more than.
So now you're at 13 and 1/2 percent.
Yes, I mean, I think my opinion, you know, we can all have different opinions about what the right percentage number is. I think 15 sounds onerous, especially since we're at 10 on a townwide standard level. And I am concerned about making it a requirement to be above what we sort of adopted as our townwide standard. I understand where Alex is coming from when it comes to deciding, you know, what, whether you want to be restrictive on developers or you're trying to get something done here. I'm not sure how the bonus would really work here because there's not, you're not really, there's really no incentive, I don't think, for you. There's no ability to add additional density. That certainly wouldn't make the neighborhood happy based on what we've heard.
You could do the bonus, the ability to put funds and say the trust fund is the decimal point.
That's.
So you get your, you get your round number and then anything above that is.
Anything between 10 and 12 and 1/2 percent. Perhaps you put a dollar figure on it and it's just a pro rata basis at that point.
12 and 1/2 percent is what was requested at town meeting, right?
I'm just making up the number. That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So if you said, you know, your minimum is 12 and 1/2 percent, but if you're between 10 and 12, you can use, you have to have a minimum of 10. You know, there's nothing you can do below that, but you can contribute $25,000, $50,000, whatever the number is for each additional percent that you're off. I'm just throwing something out here, but it is an optic issue for me, I think, with the town meeting. I think it becomes a real stoppage of luck with town.
So a minimum physical onsite of 10 percent and then 2 and 1/2 percent either onsite or if that's not feasible, put in the trust fund. That could be interesting. And then any decimal point put in the trust fund.
Right, so in that particular case, if he's putting up 4, depending on where it comes out.
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't go as high as 15 percent because I think that that sends a signal to, that Alex was talking about, to the developers that, right, sure, put one in, but, yeah, exactly.
Go away, yep, I agree.
This is going to be the new standard. If you change the 10 percent, any new zoning will require the new percentage.
I agree with that.
I think that, given the fact.
That's why we're just working it back and forth, yeah.
My view is, given the fact, I think 10 percent is a significant amount of housing. I think that discouraging developers from using the zoning that we go through such hoops to create is not something in our interest. And I think that those who say, "We've got to do a better job in creating affordable housing," are not being honest if they say that this developer providing four units, which is four more than the town has produced on the town farm or anywhere else, is somehow shirking. I think that four units is, it's significant. And doing it, you know, saying 12 percent on these private developments, making them harder, is not going to get us to 500 units.
Oh, no, no.
It's not going to do it. It is simply a theoretical exercise that people are engaging in, which I don't think is productive.
Except that they're going to be the ones that vote in the zoning. That's my concern.
I think your point about hindering development by raising it above 10 percent. In fact, if we hinder development, we ain't going to get any affordable housing, are we?
We may get, if we, if we push it into 40B, we're going to, and it's all rental.
Yeah.
Then we're going to get a treasure trove of affordable housing.
That's right.
But what's the point, what's the point of creating the zoning in the first place?
Right, and I don't, I don't care for the idea of the bonus, only for the fact that I don't like the idea of increasing the density.
Neither do the abuttes.
Neither do the abuttes. And you, and you, what you're saying is we're creating more affordable units. You can use different terminology if you like, but yet you're saying to people, "We want to give you an affordable place to live where customarily it's more expensive, but now we're going to give you a project-type affordable place to live because we're going to make it so damn dense." You wouldn't want to live there even as the affordable.
Yeah, I mean, I guess speaking as a developer, having worked, you know, working in a number of municipalities, you know, what's onerous? Is 10 percent onerous? When if you see a 10 percent inclusionary housing provision, I don't react in a negative way. That feels like that's part of the currency that I have to live with to do business doing this. You know, move the needle up to 12, 12 and 1/2, that's the other statistic or number that I see, quite frankly. I don't know that I changed my tune that much. We start getting to 15, 20, 25. We, you know, I was working in a town that had a cluster bylaw that said 25 percent had to be inclusionary and there was a cap on density and you looked at it and you said, and it was this negotiated special permit process. So you said, "Okay, well, this looks and smells like 40B, why don't I just go do 40B?" So it didn't, it did disincentivize me in that case to using the town's bylaw and going through a rational, reasoned land planning exercise, which is what I like to do. Start with the land, what does the land, how does the land speak to you? And how does it, how can you work with the land and work with the environment? Meaning that, not just the trees, but the environment in which that parcel is located to develop something that belongs there. That's our approach, you know? There are other approaches, is, okay, we're just going to cram as much in as we can. That's not our approach. So, you know, I don't think you're treading on water as it relates to, you know, discouraging at least rational, reasoned developers like me. If you're in that 10, 12 percent range, I think when you start moving the needle above that, you know, yeah, it starts to get there. Whether it adds more to the rent roll, housing roll list, whatever the word is. Yeah, we just, we got one against a denominator of 500. No, but it might be one that you would not have otherwise gotten. And I think there's a way to do it here easily without, you know, this bonus thing. The bonus thing is, you know, we, we end up sort of pushing and pulling and pushing and pulling and you end up, in a sense, forcing more density on to the parcel than the parcel necessarily should support in order to sort of gain the percentage, so, I mean, I guess.
We're moving a lot of pieces here. We're trying to endorse a plan that I think the board generally likes, that the neighborhood clearly likes and has spent a lot of time working with the developer to create. But we're also trying to create a zoning article that is going to apply to other sites potentially and therefore sets a precedence in two directions. And it has to be, it has to be endorsed by not only us, but by the warrant committee and also by the town meeting. And I'm somewhat worried about warrant committee and I'm very worried about town meeting. And I just, I would be disappointed if this project was forced in a different direction because of us not being able to craft something that town meeting will arguably accept. Maybe they'll accept the 10 percent. They've accepted it once before, but it was close and.
They've actually accepted 10 percent several times before because PUD over on Central Avenue was 10 percent.
Right, and the cluster was 10 percent.
And the cluster was 10 percent.
I mean, 12 percent makes no difference to you, it's still four units.
Right.
So I think we could.
But to your point, it sets a new precedence and we may not want to do that.
I think you just make a good point about encouraging smart development relative to discouraging smart development and having people come in here trying to connive things into the space and.
It may be, it may be that the answer is that 10 percent and if there's an overage like 4 or 3/2, that you work some sort of contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We can't do it here because that would be outside the scope of the article. But that would be a possible way of proceeding in the future, which I think we could certainly tell town meeting we were willing to consider.
In fact, the sort of townwide article that we're looking at developing for the next round, that's something we could then consider there, is what do you do with that decimal point? All right, that's when you put the amount into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, and that way we could go to town meeting and say, "Look, we're already discussing whether or not it's possible to do that in this bylaw."
I think we can put up, we can push some of the sins here onto that committee and suggest that these are things that we're dealing with at that committee level. So that is a good potential consideration.
Right.
Okay, so we see who else wants to be heard on this article? Other questions, other questions for the developer? And the developer's attorney? Okay, who else wants to be heard on this particular article? Well, what does the board, what does the board think?
I have two, one small comment and one, something that will likely create discussion. The first comment is just with regard to the name, Plan Unit Townhouse Development. I look at what the purposes of this bylaw does and I also look at the fact that we're bringing up a condominium forum that we're going to be talking about, which would arguably include townhouses. And I wonder if we shouldn't consider something more along the lines of a, you know, estate preservation, plan development, or something along those lines. That just feels like what the intent of this bylaw is to me, which is really preserving some of these bigger estates. But I throw that out there for discussion. The other question I have is the need for the abutting the multifamily project and I just am interested in hearing the others' opinions on that as far as, you know, do we want to, what's the purpose of that? It doesn't seem to lead to me any, to correspond any of the purposes we're identifying in number two, but I'm just interested in hearing what the comments are on that because it feels overly restrictive to me. But anyway, that's, those are my two points for further discussion.
Well, I wrote it. It just seems to me the name is, it's, changing the name doesn't do anything to the article. It just causes an extra bit of time.
When you say.
My concern is I think we're going into a condo planning process and.
To differentiate this from that.
I think there might be, there may be a point in doing that.
I have actually a quick comment on that, which is I believe the warrant is going, has already gone into the proof stage.
Yeah, it has.
It's going back to the printer next week. And if you change the name of the article, you're going to, and change it from Plan Unit Townhouse Development to Estate Preservation, however you want to change it, there are multiple paragraphs throughout this that you're now going to have to change. And I think it might be.
I question whether that's a reason to not change zoning, but I understand your point.
Changing the name, it doesn't change the zoning, it just changes the name.
When you say Estate Preservation, do you intend that they're always going to preserve the building?
I don't need to go down, we don't have to have a long discussion on this, but I do think that, especially with us going into a planning process for arguably a planned, a townhouse bylaw or a condo bylaw, it just feels like it's, it's going to be duplicative at some point. But anyway, that was just one comment. My more important, I think, comment is the second, so that's.
All right, well, the reason that's there, because this is dense multi-unit development and rather than just plunk it down in the middle of a neighborhood with no multi-unit development, I suggested that it had to be near, in fact, to a but, an existing multi-unit development so that it could not be said that it was inappropriate for its site because it's right next to the same sort of development, multi-unit, as it is itself. So that was the reasoning.
Okay. I mean, in this particular case, I think we've got fairly good screening and I actually live on Brushover Road and I, it took me two years to discover the multi-using, multi-unit housing project behind it. So, you know, I think it's, the question of whether it's, you know, inconsistent with the other properties on the street, I think probably remains, but in any case, I just, I believe it's overly restrictive. With the condo bylaw coming up, you know, my, I believe this is a good project. I wanted to go forward. I do believe that that is probably a bit more restrictive than I would, I would usually endorse and probably wouldn't endorse if we didn't have that coming up.
All right then, what do you, what does the, what does the rest of the board think?
I think that restriction, if you will, is, some might see it as a protection.
I think that we can, you know, we can discuss it. We've got a working group on condominium development, we can discuss it. I think that we should support this as it's written and, you know, we may have a spirited discussion in town meeting anyhow.
I would guess we will.
So, what do you think, Board? Shall we recommend town meeting adopt this?
Yep, so moved.
Okay, we've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. That's a unanimous recommendation. Now, we're going to do a, the easier of the two sign ones, which we did last time. Look at your warrant, your warrant sheet.
Yep.
Do you have your warrant sheet? This is a, no, this is a, this is a piece of paper that has a selection from the warrant. Did you give it to them?
Ah, it's underneath the City of Quincy, yes.
Pick it out.
All right.
I went to the warrant committee. We recommended this last time. We said, "This is great." What was, what was in the warrant before this? But it turned out, it turned out that I made a mistake in drafting it and adding paragraphs F and G to subsection C of section three wasn't going to work. So we had to change it to put the sub-paragraphs at the end of paragraph five of subsection C.
So paragraph five, this is the new one?
This is the new one. And this is something, you can see, this is something the warrant committee, warrant committee and I worked out and we, someone mentioned that we might specify that this has to do with exterior signs. And there is a definition of signs, of exterior signs. There's a definition of interior signs too in the bylaw, interestingly enough. And there's a definition of signs. But this has to do with lighting of exterior signs and, other than mention, other than change where it goes and to add the word exterior before sign, it's the same, the same article as we recommended last time.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Yep, you're missing the dark sky compliant.
Okay, now Ted, Ted is going to tell us how it differs. We've got your recommendation, but.
So the difference, the difference is the placement in the article.
Right.
The placement in your section. And also we got rid of some of the language. There was no particular scientific justification for.
Dark sky.
Dark sky compliant.
Oh, dark, yes, yeah.
It actually is, it's a capitalized term.
You weren't able to give it to us, so.
I went to the, I went to the, I Googled dark sky compliant and.
Did you find the International Association, yeah.
Of dark sky compliant.
There's an international association of dark skies that has.
There is an association, but they don't have, they, and they, they have.
They have all sorts of recommended zoning language for dark skies.
I understand, but they don't, they don't have, dark sky compliant is not a, is not one of them.
Did you find out what was the correct one to put in there?
It beat the hell out of me, I couldn't figure it out.
We didn't think it was going to be enforceable, nobody could tell us what about.
And there was something else that we had.
We got rid of the line, the end of the first change.
Ambient light.
But which exceed a factor of three above ambient light.
Oh, yes. I put that in because I lifted it from something else and I went to ambient light measurement and I couldn't for the life of me figure out what a factor of three represented with respect to the ambient light intensity.
You can measure the ambient light?
Yeah.
By a factor of three?
Well, once you measure the ambient light, you can multiply it by a factor of three.
Right.
And what do you get?
You have the same situation with ambient sound and you can multiply.
But your ambient, you have to establish it somewhere.
It's the ambient light pre-lighting.
This is ambient light at any point that it touches.
Well, then what you're saying is you'd have to add additional language that says within a 60-foot square area, the ambient light from the sign.
If you multiply it by three, how does it work? Is it like a 60 watt?
Foot candles.
It would be 100.
They measure in foot candles, huh? And if you measure.
Ambient light is measured in foot candles.
All light is.
Yes, all light is.
Okay. In any event, it came out. I couldn't.
You, I mean, you could measure that.
But it, we could have done a standard, but saying.
The only thing you're missing on the ambient is, like you, I thought you were getting to in that is where do you measure the ambient or to what vicinity do you measure the ambient?
Well, what we said.
You'd have to say within 80 feet of the sign in question, measure the ambient.
Okay, hang on. It says this. Illumination shall be shielded or directed so that it does not shine directly onto neighboring properties and shall be dark sky compliant. We weren't able to.
I'm looking at the dark skies compliant requirements.
All right.
I think the measure is the thing that, I'm not questioning what you're doing, I'm just thinking the measure.
That's what I'm looking for, is measurements.
And then it says, "High-intensity lights shall not be used provided that the Board of Selectmen for good cause and superior design may authorize lights which have no adverse impacts but which exceed a factor of three above ambient light intensity measured at any point on the ground."
Well, but you still have to say, "Measure at any point on the ground within 50 feet."
I, that's what it said.
I mean, I'm always speaking to the fact that how do you, how do you answer something?
You're trying to correct it.
Right, if you say.
How do you define it?
How do you finally say?
Because then somebody could say, "Well, I took the ambient light measure and it's five times more than you think." Well, yeah, but I took it over here.
You have to take it somewhere and then multiply it by three.
Right, but you have to decide within the bylaw, the limits of where you're going to take it.
But which exceed?
I'm agreeing that you could keep your language, you just maybe have to.
I guess it would be the lesser, the least ambient light, three times the least ambient, rather than the most ambient light.
Fine, but still you have to say within a 50-foot radius of the sign.
Right, but you'd have to, you'd have to define that it was, in any event, it got taken out in the warrant committee draft and it seemed to me to, that it wasn't a standard. It was a standard and I actually, at the last hearing, said, "Someone needs to check this."
And nobody did.
No, I did. What did you find out about dark sky compliant?
Actually.
It's very important.
Rather a lot, but it's all in very tiny print on my phone. So what I was going to suggest is that we leave it out for now, but we may want to consider a lighting bylaw because we've been adding it to a couple of other things recently and we've been adding some of the technical requirements without knowing that we're necessarily doing that. I think we ought to consider a lighting bylaw later on.
Okay.
But we can leave it out for now.
Both of the things you talked, we've talked about though.
It's creating standards, basically, is what we're trying to do.
To the illumination.
Right.
And the intensity of the.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
We're trying to be.
Limit the intensity.
Establish a standard that the building and spectrum can figure out.
Well, and so that's.
Light doesn't blind people.
That's the problem that I have with the no adverse impacts is we're not, to Mike's point, we're not defining what adverse impacts are. So the intent of doing the dark sky compliant, the intent of doing the factor of three above ambient light is to establish.
Take a look at that.
In other words.
No adverse impacts is not. Yeah, it's completely discretionary, that is not a standard.
Eliminating the three times the ambient, the dark sky, you've taken out discretion.
It is, it's whatever the selectmen say.
Yeah, but that, that opens up a can of worms for the selectmen where somebody says, "This is adverse impacts." And this other person said, "No, it's not adverse impact," and they have to make a judgment call.
They say, "We think it is, we think it is."
Isn't that the exact flip side of what, why you eliminated the language? Because you can't measure it? Well, how can you measure something that's discretionary?
Right.
Well, no, I mean, once.
At some point.
I mean, what I want, what I really wanted was to let the selectmen do it.
And that's what you got.
So then it's, yeah. So all I'm saying is at some point, we need to consider a bylaw that establishes the standards that we can all be comfortable with so that selectmen don't have to make a discretionary decision because they have the standards by which they can make their decision.
You know, I agree and we, we tried, but I, I think that it was, I agree. Who wants to be heard on this particular change? We've already, we've already had a hearing and people have already, no one testified. No one's going to testify now. What does the board think? Shall we adopt the warrant committee's thoughtful changes, which I help?
I don't think they're very thoughtful, that's my thought. I honestly don't think they're very thoughtful.
No, no, I mean, what I helped most on doing was putting them, tacking them onto paragraph five.
Good job, Alex, well done.
And then confessed that I had no idea how, what's dark sky compliant or what the factor of three indicated.
So then the question becomes, is this something we want to go ahead and put forward and then add additional standards to at our next round?
We don't, we don't want this sent, we don't want this sent back to us for study. Well, the Board of Selectmen and there are people who want a light bylaw and we really owe it to them.
But this is effectively saying you can do whatever you want and as long as it doesn't bother anybody according to nobody's specific discretion, then it's not a problem.
Well, it's saying the selectmen have to figure it out.
Yeah, temporarily we're putting quite a burden on the selectmen.
No, we're not, it's helpful to them.
Did you ask them if it was helpful to them?
No, they want it, they want, well, I think they want it. They'll, they'll get to pitch in on this one. Okay, what do you think?
I'm willing to have a go-forward with the stipulation that we need to have an overall light bylaw. After, after this is done, we need to revise and put some standards in there.
We need to explore more specificity with respect to light.
Yes, exactly.
I think that, I agree with that.
We need criteria.
Okay, so Mike, is that a second?
Put you on the spot.
You seen me move, huh? Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion? All in favor of recommending this to the town meeting for approval? Say aye, aye.
Well, I believe.
I'm going to vote no.
One no. We've still have, we have three strong ayes, one floppy eye and one no.
The wavery eyes.
Well, it just, I guess the.
We're going to.
But it's what you're getting, it establishes a bylaw that we can.
We can add to later on.
Would you nodify, I guess?
This is something, this is something that was wanted and it may not be perfect, but it's, I think it's better than nothing. Okay, now. All right, and the warrant committee was thrilled.
How do you, how do you go to topic?
Okay, now, signs in residence districts. This will be our last topic of the night, I believe.
Fine by me.
Yeah, we've got Quincy, but other than that.
It's just a notice.
It's just a notice. Then it's our last topic of the night.
All right, so now, a couple of things. A number of people, this has to do, currently, we have a, a sign bylaw for residence districts in section three, subsection B. Subsection B, section, paragraph three, which says in A, "No person shall erect any permanent sign of any type in any residential zoning district of the town." And this seems a bit harsh. And so, and then it says, there is an exception to that. It says, "Any permanent sign lawfully erected and existing as of the date of adoption of this bylaw." Do we know when it was adopted, Bill? It was adopted about 15 years ago.
It's in the back under amendments.
Okay, and then it says, "Any sign permitted by the board of selectmen is necessary for public safety or the public health." And I suppose they could stretch certain things, but it seemed like. Like we should, we should, we should address what signs are permitted and, including temporary signs. Currently in B, temporary signs are permitted. And it doesn't say anything about how big they need to be, how many they need to be. It's just temporary signs. You can put them up whenever you want. And temporary signs are, it doesn't, it does. I think it defines temporary sign as only existing for 45 days. But it did seem reasonable that we should have some standards for both permanent signs and temporary signs. And the standards that we're suggesting here are not meant to be really restrictive. They're just meant to be, to provide standards. And if people think that three square feet isn't enough, we could do a blanket four square feet. It is, it is meant to just let people know what they can do and what they can't do. And I've really tried to, to touch all the bases. Although I got a call from a clergy person just recently who said, "We would like to put a sign, the Episcopal Church welcomes you, St. Michael's Parish, someplace and probably on public land." And I don't think that that's permitted. It isn't permitted. And it's, unless it's for the public health, maybe. It's for the spiritual health of the, it's up to the selectmen to figure it out, but.
I see a theme.
In any event, this is.
We want to go home.
This is, this is meant to provide some standards. There, we discussed it briefly with the warrant committee and people said, "Your, your number sign, your, your sign should be able to be illuminated."
But is it going to be compliant with dark sky standard?
Well, I'm sure it's not now.
What I said was, what I, I mean, there was a suggestion made by the warrant committee, but I think that I've done even better suggestion. The warrant committee was, "Signs shall not be unconventionally illuminated." And I think we should say, "Signs shall not be illuminated other than by a low, steady, white light." A low-intensity, steady, white light.
You also have, "Signs shall not be illuminated without authorization by the board of selectmen" up in the top paragraph. So does that mean anytime a homeowner wants to?
Signs should not be illuminated other than by a low, steady, white light without authorization.
Where are you?
Well, we're under three signs in residence districts. Are you in the temporary signs department?
No, I'm under three signs in residence districts. One.
Go to the second to last sentence.
I have, "Signs shall not be illuminated without authorization by the board of selectmen and instances where the board of selectmen is required to consider authorization for a proposed sign, the board's review shall include the proposed design content and construction of the sign."
On that second sentence.
Yes.
I, I suggest, "Signs shall not be illuminated other than by a low-intensity, steady, white light without authorization by the board of selectmen."
My apologies, I didn't realize that hadn't actually been put in.
And I think that's better than saying unconventionally illuminated.
I agree.
All right.
That's good.
So, that changed.
That brings me back to my initial question.
Yeah.
Does that mean that every time a homeowner wants to illuminate their address, they're going to have to come in for permission from the board of selectmen?
If they do with the steady, low-intensity white light, they're not going to have to.
Just double checking because it will be asked.
So you're going to give me what you wrote, right?
I'm going to give you this whole thing. Okay, now, that was the only change with respect to permanent signs. On temporary signs, they, we wanted to add in the first paragraph, right before, "Only the following are permissible temporary signs." Going to repeat the language that we had in the prior paragraph, which says, "When reference is made to the board of selectmen in this paragraph, such reference shall include the town's sign review committee or the board of selectmen's designee under procedures established by the board of selectmen for that committee or designee." And we have it in the prior paragraph and initially, the two paragraphs were one paragraph, but they somehow became two paragraphs, so, two paragraphs. So we add that. And then in little Roman numeral five, there was a discussion and I think that we, we got. We thought this would be good. Signs giving notice of a private event, such as a yard sale on a lot, provided that any such sign shall not be erected for more than seven days before the event and that any such sign shall be removed no more than one day after the event. And then no such sign. What is that? That no such sign shall be placed on public property without authorization by the town. No such signs shall exceed four square feet.
Oh, Alex?
Yeah.
I'm not splitting hairs. The warrant committee recommended, where you have the word private event?
Yeah.
The warrant committee recommended personal.
Leave out such as a.
Yeah, move that out. Because that'll, we think that that'll make the town meeting.
Okay, signs giving notice of a personal event?
Yeah.
There are town events that are private, so that makes sense.
Okay.
After the spiritual.
Let's say a person, of a personal event. I actually knew that the warrant committee had said that. But I changed it, but I'll change it right back. Signs giving notice of a personal event, seven days before the event, the sign can go up. One day after the event, they come down and the signs. No such signs shall exceed four square feet.
Two days.
What?
Two days after?
Two days. Just leave the two. No, the two, okay.
Oh, I had to note that you wanted one.
No, I think you kept the two, actually.
All right.
Can I ask you to check the general bylaw to make sure that the numbers comply? Thank you.
Under police regulations?
Under police regulations.
Okay, I, you know, I'm inclined to think. No, I, I do incline to think that maybe we should simply say that all, have a minimum of four square feet for all signs. I have a whole bunch of three-square-feet signs at the beginning in permanent signs.
They've got at least one under temporary, under a small Roman numeral four.
Yeah. I would think, I would think we would leave that, let the warrant committee hash it out and if they think four is right, do four.
Three square feet is pretty small.
Two by two?
Two by two is four square feet.
So why don't we say four?
Four all the way, wherever it says three.
Wherever it says three, four.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, four. So that's all, that's, that's all I have on this one. We're going to. We're now going to hear some criticism of this work of mine. Come on up and join us. Introduce, introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Cindy Christensen, 59 Collmar Street, town meeting member precinct seven. And I'll start off by saying, according to the current zoning bylaws, a light is a sign. The problem I have with this is that, and I gave some of you the full packet. Most of you just got my cover page, but here's my concern. We're all thinking of a sign as what we all think of as a sign, but the current bylaw, section one, definitions 10 through 14, define a sign. And as far as I can tell, a sign is almost anything except personal thoughts. Like what I'm thinking right now is not a sign. The azalea bush in my front yard is a sign. It includes objects, where an object is any kind of material thing that can be seen or touched. It includes lights, it includes colors, and it includes all kinds of other things that we typically think of as signs. So changing section three, every place where you see the word sign, it actually means, it could be an object, a board, a placard, paper, symbol, banner, streamer letter, number, emblem, logo, color, display or light, or any combination according to the current bylaws. So in, before changing section three, I'm wondering why isn't section one being changed? And if you do change section three, what I've highlighted for you in my item number five is that below the part that's being changed, there's something that refers to that subsection that also needs to be considered for changing. I mean, the, I, those of you that got my full handout, I've got a somewhat absurd example of a welcome sign to the left of my front door. And what I find in the health policy research work that I do, that if you put in some kind of extreme example, you can often find holes in the, in the written words that you're trying to use. And this all points, all the problems point back to section one, definitions 10 through 14. So according to this, the way it's written, the welcome sign to the left of my front door would be a sign. So would those little green men that people in my neighborhood need to put out to slow traffic down. Those would be signs. I don't know if they'd be temporary, they would be exterior. So I'm here to ask, why isn't section one being addressed? When we all sit and we think about signs and what comes to my mind too is a sign you put out in your front yard, but that's not what the definition says.
What's the only thing, the only thing that, and I'm not criticizing what you're saying, I'm just trying to understand and interpret. The only thing I heard you say is object. Otherwise, I would think, yeah, the little green guy is a sign.
It is a sign, yeah. So are, so are colors, according to the current definition. I don't know what that means. So is a light as a sign, according to our current definition.
Except for a low-intensity, steady, white light.
Right. So I'm just here to ask, before you put this, I mean, I sat here a long time tonight. I don't want to sit here a long, sit through town meeting for a long time when people start saying, "But what about lights? What about colors? What about objects?"
What, but I, I think that, you know, what we've done here is we've, as I said in my email to you, these are sort of traditional signs that, you know, that, that's little square signs.
That's what I thought when I first read it too.
I mean, what we're saying is that you can have these little square signs and whether or not you can have lights and objects and other stuff, azalea bushes, whatever, under the definition section. I mean, presumably, presumably if they're signs and they're permanent, they're not permitted now, if they are. But I'm not sure of the building inspector. But you've, you've got a point that we could, we could tighten up the definition section. The problem with deciding to redefine the word sign is that I remember the last time or the time before that we tried to redefine sign, that it was. Things, things, things went crazy.
Well, it looks like it did. This thing's crazy to me.
We've got an approved definition now. What I'm suggesting that we do doesn't really. It fits within that definition, obviously. And it doesn't cause any more harm than the definition may already have had. And it actually does some good because it says you can have these particular traditional-type signs rather than nothing. So.
Here's the problem I have with it though, is that it comes with enforcement. I've, you know, I've lived in the town a little more than three years now and what I have seen is there's a lot of who you know or who you are as far as what gets enforced and what doesn't. And what I don't want to have happen are people in my neighborhood who I represent to have a bylaw, enforced or not enforced, because of a poor definition of what a sign is. And I've heard this from people who've lived in Milton a long time, people have just moved in. It's a matter of you're opening up a door, a door for poor enforcement.
But the door is, the door is already open because the bylaw is there and it says no permanent signs. And, you know, temporary signs have to be taken down every 45 days. So I, I mean, if there were enforcement of this rather. If there were enforcement of your azalea bush, saying, Cindy, you've got to dig out that azalea bush.
Or I don't, someone doesn't like the color of it. I mean, you know, it's.
But I, I.
I know it's absurd. I admit it's absurd.
Once again, what we've done is made it somewhat better.
I disagree, but, okay. I, I disagree. And it's not within the definition.
It is within the, anything is, as you point out, a lot is within the definition.
Yeah, basically the thing that follows.
We could, you know, along with developing light standards, lighting standards, do some work on the definition of signs. Maybe we, you should submit what you think the definition should be. That would be helpful.
Alex, you're an attorney. Can you speak to the reasonableness standard of law here? I mean.
Oh, if they, they said the azalea bush is a sign or? I think that if you were to go, your enforcement authority would say, "This, this bylaw as applied is not, does not hold water." And so they said, "We won't, we won't enforce it to the extent that it's, you know, it's obviously." obviously illegal.
I mean, I'll define a sign for you right now. I'll take out the word "object, color, and light" from the current definition.
All right. We'll take a look at that. We can't, we can't redefine "sign" this time around, but you've got a, you've got a point.
Got a good point.
Yeah. Well, and please also pay attention to this other section that needs to be referred to, if this change is being made.
Okay, let me...
That's my item number five.
I found the other one.
Okay. I just, you, remember, we do have a Section Three now.
No, but I, what I say here is, there's a...
No, I mean, there's a reference to it, but we'll, we'll, let's take a look at it and see if it...
Azalea bush wouldn't be an object.
See if it...
So, I don't really know what that is.
Okay, now, one second. We're going to, well, the bylaw, before we close, the bylaw bill is going to tell us something.
Signs may be erected no more than two days prior to the sale. They must be removed no later than the following, the day following the sale.
Okay, but that, that, but other signs can be for seven.
Okay, so we have to take the seven back to...
That's real estate, right?
That was real estate? You didn't specify what you meant by sale.
No, that's on a sign. Signs, signs giving notice of a personal event on a lot, provided that any such sign shall not be erected. That one.
What was, what were you...
What did you just read?
Section 37.
It says, it has to do with yard sales.
Okay, that's what we were wondering, sales of, yes. Sale of what, house or...
So, the yard sale is covered somewhere else.
Only on private property. No signs will be permitted on town streets, poles, trees, or sidewalks. Signs may be erected no more than two days prior to the sale. Must be removed no later than the day following the sale.
Okay, but, but it fits within what we're doing, so...
I agree, we should just take out the reference to yard sale, that's all.
We'll just take it out.
Yeah.
And, yes, which I, yeah.
We could be very specific and say that they were for personal events other than yard sales.
Fine.
Excuse me, Phil, that, that's just for yard sales, am I wrong in using quoted?
Yep.
So, if you just say, "Personal events other than yard sales," that way you're allowed to advertise your wedding or your...
It says, "No yard, garage, porch, or barn sale shall be held on any property in the town without the property owner or occupant of said property, first obtaining a permit from the Board of Selectmen."
And then it goes on to give the time thing. But doesn't it fit within it? Doesn't it, wouldn't it fit within it without changing it? Because seven days, or two days is within seven days.
Yeah, as long as you take the yard sale out, it's fine.
No, because it has, can you read the, read that again, please?
Article thirty seven, at Section 37. "No, no yard, garage, porch, or barn sale shall be held on any property in the town of Milton without the property owner or the occupant of said property, first obtaining a permit from the Board of Selectmen. Not more than two garage, yard, porch, or barn sales shall be held by any property owner or occupant of said property within a one-year period. But the Board of Selectmen may grant more than two permits per year to a religious, educational, or other charitable organization. Only articles and items owned by the property owner or occupant shall be sold at the yard, garage, porch, or barn sale unless, in the judgment of the Board, the sole intent of the sale is to benefit a charitable organization located in the town of Milton. Each permit granted by the Board of Selectmen shall be not more than two consecutive days of sale. Signs will be permitted only on private property. No signs will be permitted on town streets, on poles, trees, or sidewalks. Signs may be erected no more than two days prior to the sale. Must be removed no later than the following, the day following the sale."
So, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Thank you.
It will probably follow it.
Oh. Do you like it? Me, too. I think, I think if we just call it a personal event other than a permitted sale.
Why not just other than a yard sale? Why not other than a yard sale?
I might just say "personal event," leave it alone. Because you've already got yard sale covered.
The bylaw quoted, there's several garage sales.
Yeah, but it's all, it's all generic yard sale.
You need a permit for them, and this will...
Yeah, but people don't get permits.
And that could, you could have to get a permit for a wedding, to your...
We're trying to cover signs for things that you know...
Some people have, the yards still get a permit.
So, like a wedding, or...
I understand, but people don't get permits for yard sales, do they, Bill?
Yes, they do.
Well, they're supposed to. Whether or not they actually do is another matter, but they're supposed to.
Okay, you're saying, other than a permitted event?
Take it out.
Other than a permitted, other than, other than an event that requires a permit.
Other than permitted sales.
Yeah.
Or a sale as referenced in this section.
Other than a permitted sale, how does that sound?
I think it could talk to her.
I don't like that.
I just take it out.
About the head.
I think that they, the Board thinks that if you just say, "Signs giving notice of a personal event," does the trick, and then yard sale, that, you know, a, a permitted sale is covered somewhere else.
Exactly.
Great. I like that, too.
Great. Okay, so, doing nothing is our...
It's, it's more elegant.
Okay, now, on Section 3A7, little Roman, no, little I, it says, "A dwelling used primarily and principally for residential purposes, may be used incidentally but without public display of goods, wares, or signs, except as permitted in Section B3 hereof." And, the new Section B3 has to do with signs for these things, so it works.
Does it need to include B4?
No. That's temporary signs.
And I, I'll finish by asking that you check the definition of temporary and the default permanent sign definition, to make sure it's consistent, and for these two articles you've been discussing.
Okay. It is Section One.
And these definitions also appear in the sign manual, just...
As they should.
Yeah, well...
But that's for the selectmen. That's citizen speak at the selectmen.
What is?
The sign manual.
Well, no, I'm, I'm done.
Isn't that a selectman document?
Mine.
It's your document.
I mean, I, you know, no, I mean, he's, well, he's here.
All right.
The definition needs to be changed, it's just obvious.
The definition of "sign."
Sign.
Well, I think, I think, I think...
It just can't be changed under this article.
I think we've, I think we're agreeing with you, that you're making a good point. We just can't do it tonight as part of this article, but I think we, I think you're right. When you look at it, it's pretty...
It's anything. All these little thing, I don't know if you got my full handout here, but it's...
Yes, we did.
It's the little snail thing that blows in the wind.
I looked at that definition, and I just couldn't face...
I couldn't, I, yeah.
I just want to mention that I'm pretty sure that "colors" refers to things like regimental colors, flags, banners.
Oh, interesting.
Does it strike the colors?
It's interesting.
No, why would you if that's the case?
That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, it does.
That makes a good, makes good sense.
Lighting in colors, yeah.
Yeah, it is singular, it means, it just says color, but...
If it's singular, probably a title.
Okay. Yeah, that would make sense.
We could have another, a look at it another day.
Yep. We'll move it to the ambient light and the dark sky compliance discussion.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, this is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else is going to want to be heard on this? We've got a lot of people here, but none of them seem to want to be heard on it. Okay, planning board, what do you think?
Move just to recommend as amended?
Okay. Any, just, we have a second, don't we, Ed?
Yes, second.
I thought so.
Brian, you didn't say...
Seconded it as well, actually. This way...
Two seconds.
Two seconds.
Okay. Further discussion? All right. I think that we will see who's in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a unanimous recommendation, and I will go to the warrant committee and give them the good word.
You're going to give those to Emily, right?
And I'm going to give these, this to you.
Oh, Emily's, yeah.
Emily.
Emily's.
That boy.
Okay. Now, there is going to be marijuana available on Ricucci Drive.
Ruchudi.
Ruchudi.
Ruchudi Drive?
Yeah.
Okay. Will you give us the details on that, Emily?
I will.
Phil will, I know nothing about it.
Right.
Any directions?
Exactly.
When the city of Quincy has a zoning Board of Appeals agenda, they forward that agenda to the town of Milton, as they are required to, that we do the same thing. We take our zoning Board of Appeals agendas and send them to Quincy. I've taken a look at each one of these locations, and the last one on October 7th is due to be, "Hermont Inc., for a special permit for a medical marijuana dispensary on the premises numbered 216 Ruchudi Drive. It's not for anything except informational purposes. I always check to make sure that there is not something happening on our borders. This one's close enough to our borders to be..."
Is this one right near the reservoir?
This is right near the entrance to Quarry Hills. This is right near the auto auction. Actually, right beside the auto auction.
Oh, is that the, it's, that's...
That's Ruchudi Drive. Going out to Quarry Hills, called...
So, it's going to be where Clifford's used to be?
Yes.
Okay, that, now everyone knows.
You know how to get there.
It's very good of you to clarify that, Alex.
Anybody that's interested, that's on Tuesday, October 7th. This is one of those things that, we had the tower put in, and nobody knew. I do actually watch these things. I do take and check off each one, as you can see by the ticks that are on the page that you were handed.
Are you going?
It's just an FBI.
Is somebody from the town going?
I had an op plan to ongoing.
I have a client meeting that night, I can't go.
I think it's, I think it's something, well, worthwhile knowing. Okay. Anything else, Bill? Do we, you have a report to give us?
I could, but it's probably too long. I do know that Emily and I are going to Tufts on October 9th.
Yes.
Emily Martin?
No, this Emily.
I can go.
Emily Innes. My bad. We're going to talk about having a team of students come and look at East Milton Square.
Planning students from Tufts, yeah.
And then, in the spring, we'll go back and have other ones that will look at the historic center out front of Town Hall.
This is following on from the master plan. They're taking a look at the document and looking at some of the areas, East Milton, we chose East Milton Square because of the parking recommendations there. The idea is that the students would follow along from that and look at other improvements, designs for other improvements that can be made in East Milton Square after that's done. So, it's an exercise for them. They'll get to meet with the Board of Selectmen. They're going to probably meet with the Chamber of Commerce as well, probably come and meet with us, and then what they come up with, we may display in the media, the library. We haven't talked with the teacher about that, but, and then the same thing for where they're looking at how to knit together all the municipal buildings and create a center. We will probably have them meet with all sorts of people, including the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, and then come up with some ideas which will be displayed, some of which may be something the town wants to take on, and some of which won't. But it's a, it's a good planning exercise for the students, and it's good for the town to get these fresh ideas coming in and seeing what they'll do with it.
Just a little bit of feedback, I've been in other, worked in other communities, have done the similar thing. I would recommend, since we're taking, you're taking the energy, your, Bill's taking the energy, that we actually, at the end of the process, have it presented to a joint meeting of the Selectmen and Planning Board.
That's a great idea.
As opposed to just display it, I think that would be...
The students would probably be thrilled to be...
Well, and I think we'll give the opportunity for some public comment or whatever as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to make that recommendation.
It's a great idea.
In the pack that you received tonight, yes, you've got the housing production plan. Don't forget, you have the red line at home, if you want it electronically. You have the 40B peer review documentation in front of you. If anybody wants it electronically, I have it electronically as well. Just let me know. You have, in that same set of packets there, you have citizen training, planning collaborative courses for the fall, fall semester. You have in front of you the Curry College field issues. The Maytown meeting stated that the Selectmen and Planning Board would, would get together and, you know, address the field issues. There is a letter in there from Curry addressing their field issues right now. I know that Dennis and I are due to meet to go through the letter and see what's going to be said at town meeting. I've also been dealing with issues of the Yulin Rink. The Yulin Rink's been open since September 2nd. The town is going through a response to a letter that was submitted to the newspaper on, from the Friends of Yulin Rink, primarily addressing some of the legal issues and some of the public skating issues. The public skating, Yulin actually started Wednesday, September 3rd. They've been open Wednesdays since then, and though it is 11:30 to 2:30, it gets a pretty good crowd coming in. There's between 10 and 15 people there during that period that is skating. In October, there, and it's also open on days that school is not in session, so it was open today, and there were students there. Come October, it'll be open Wednesdays plus Saturday and Sunday. In November, it will start its regular schedule. We are the only rink that was a DCR rink, whether it's run privately or by a town, that is open for public skating in September and October. So, for as much as I'm getting beat up in the newspaper for not helping the kids, we're the only rink that's out there that's a DCR rink that's open to public skating. That's it.
All right.
Yeah.
I don't think we approved the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't make the, I'm missing a set. I don't get to see one of the sets. Was there only one set a minute?